Six o'clock or six oh one and it's all this mean to order places. Full call.
Stan Wassinger, your name? Under.
So Daley Zaxton, is that what I?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Just need a motion to approve the meeting agenda, please, motion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, money.
Move on to item number five, discussions have the motions, allow to interrupt plans, we go to the handle. I haven't seen conference.
Right, so she has gone to one before and I've gone to a couple of different ones and this one is closed in Minneapolis. Driving distance and they really have different vendors that we haven't seen before. That's where we found the software we're using right now, iCompass is when I went to one of them. And it's in the budget and I actually suggested that she go and then left it up to her whether she was available or not. May tends to be pretty busy for her, but she thinks she can make it, so. But it's up to you and the reason that we threw it on the special is because she wants to try to get the host hotel if she goes. If she doesn't go, then it doesn't matter, but.
So this isn't like a training thing, it's more?
Yeah, it's training, I mean, there's, you know, like, one of the sessions was on business writing that I remember I took, you know. There'll be things on customer service, there'll be things on council ethics or, you know, but it's just a wide range. I haven't specifically looked at the agenda to know what all the classes are, but yeah, it's training.
If I heard a motion on the floor? On favor?
Aye.
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 Move on to item number six, consider resolution for change order number one in Santer's relying rehab factory, John, and Sharon.
So, a couple of weeks ago, the contractor had reached out, but they had an opening in their schedule. February, doing jobs, wondering if they could start early. Do you recall, really starting date was pretty, well, fourteenth in the contract. So, this would be a considerable dollar change, or just do a job that early start date to the seventeenth. About the earliest time we figured they could get along and give us time to get letters out tomorrow, hopefully. Get people about a need to call me or Brian and the contractor, if we have any questions or concerns. I have no concerns with it. We're going to say the ground and mostly frozen, going in and out of freezing and with all the access to the backyards needed, that actually. Official, doing it now. There needs methods, freezing with styrene based resin, which freezing point for that is like negative twenty degrees. So, there's no cold weather concerns as far as the material handling. I know it's been a topic before about, right, porta potties kind of assuming that ten to twelve hour downtime window. So their downtime is actually half that. Therapy is methods. You know, they aim for six hours, that's four to five, the residents, but realistically, it's probably a little shorter than that. They're breaking up the work, so. Municipal pipe will come in, line the mains, four to six hours, get all the surfaces reinstated. But then they actually have subcontractor coming in later. I think a week or two later and they'll come in and seal up all the openings. And that's maybe up to a three hour downtime, realistically, and children, but. So, four to six hour range first and then two to three hour range in a couple of weeks. I think those are short enough windows, no machine of porta potty. Obviously, if somebody absolutely demands one or, you know, if something happens, but the downtime's much longer. Brian and I and the contractor, you know, there's, there's plans in place for last minute combinations that we need. So, I'm not a good plan on these porta potties, but there's a backup scenario.
I apologize, this is the first version of the resolution that says February sixth, I didn't switch them out. So that should be February seventeenth and of course today's date is the approval date.
Yeah.
There is one that he provided me, I just didn't swap it.
There's a map and a list of property owners and packages in the packet.
That's good, I'll do that, it's right there. The letters. As far as the letters, there's a few different versions, it's just been written here and, you know. There's a specific one going through, and two twenty area because of the daycare. Contractor will open their service first to reduce their downtime. You know, in the letter we explained, you know, even still, we use the toilet system, they just don't flush. They can fill up bottles, make formula or whatever, they just need to catch all the water in the bottles possibly. We even offered out, we need a bucket or something out there outside the door, because I know a lot of city cups and bottles and everything. Half that gets dumped down the drain, so if they dispose of it. They can dump it up in the bucket or Brian, the area contractor will bring it back at the end of the day and get rid of it somewhere, so. And there's some residents, oh, I think it's going to be a team or getting them. Two twenty, something like that. Second or third house down in Nicolet, they're not connected to a, uh, line, more of the pipes being lined, but they have a van in their backyard, so. Bertie's going to send better than I'm saying, contractor will access back there, you know, we're servicing in Europe. We also may have mentioned pets in the letter, if anybody's got pets, they typically land in the backyard, we'll have to. Try and keep it, keep them away from the reverse, you know, the, you weren't. I think we got all the bases covered, if this done earlier than expected.
Other than the letters going out, how generally aware are the people in the area?
I don't think there's a whole one, we're nervous. We'll send the letter out, then give them what they need to chew on and then, um. Then calls with questions, concerns, and then contractor will post them to the floor out of this. I mean, there's been, the, the pipes have been cleaned and televised and everything else over the years, so people are aware of the sewers in their backyard. So, I think just that whole run along. Corey Plon there, I think Brian had just got that cleaned out, rushed through last year, that's a few years ago, okay, a couple of years ago, so.
Yeah, I'm just weighing, like, I don't know individual, like, you mentioned about two twenty, but individual situations where, where. Rushed to send notice and for them to respond, like, is it in our? Is it in our best interest to rush it versus just having, you know, send out the communication sooner than later and just having it in April?
I mean, I, I don't know, a week, a little over a week's notice, I think it's, I mean.
I don't think the house.
I mean, a lot of people, I've, a lot of people are in there.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to have much of a service anyway, either way, wait till then or you move it out.
Yeah, I mean, I know a lot of towns.
Better now when it's colder, so you don't tear up their doors, yeah.
And a lot of towns, I know a lot of towns don't even send out, the only notice people get is a twenty-four hour notice from your contractor. Because it's, it's, it's viewed as more of an emergency repair project, right? I mean, in some cases, it kind of is, simply, so. I think we're, I think, you know, a little over a week's notice, that is a happy quid, in my opinion.
If you go too far out, they're going to forget and you'll have to do it again.
Yeah, and that's, that's just it is.
And some, like, for the trucks and the parking, it was all going to go okay.
Yeah, they're, they're going to park out on the street and they're going to pull everything back between houses, because there'll be, you know, jetty bays and. Back hoses, even liner, they have a plan is to, you know, try and come off of, like a box truck down on the street and kind of. Just roll it off the truck and back to an angle.
We already talked about the school buses a little bit too, and that, yeah, you can, you can adjust it in the mornings with that, or in the evenings, but. We'll get through it, yeah.
Yeah, questions for John? Now, consider a motion to adopt a change order number one?
Motion. Second.
Roll conference.
Aye.
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 Thank you, thanks, John.
I think that's the first change order, I've seen more than, yeah.
We have had them before, they're very opposite.
Okay, next item on the agenda, the next two items related to our budget, the first one is our capital improvement project. Shane's going to walk us through that, please.
We'll just start with the one year FY twenty-six CIP. I'll just kind of run through it and if you have any questions or, I'm going to just go right in. So, number one there at the top, and just kind of group projects together, that's where they're kind of boxed together, so number one is. Basically, all projects tied with the West Sematary Road Bridge Replacement, Intersection Improvements. So that first line is the right away easement acquisitions. The numbers from last year, CIP, you can do it a little bit, we added pros force for the right away easement acquisition process and such. Federal funding involved in the project, so that's what that difference is. I don't think we'll need to increase the money that's already set aside for that, and set aside for work, but. We may, you talked before the, the CIP is finalized, we may have a better idea of what those prices are going to be. Then meet with the property owners, write that process, so between the next month or so, they're going to need some basis to be made. Have a little bit better idea what those numbers might be, so. And the second project is, or the second line is the West Sematary Road Bridge Replacement Project. We have those design numbers, that's for the, the design of the West Sematary Road, we have all those numbers already established and funded. Then, one after that is West Sematary Road Construction Project. We need to take another look at those, so those numbers should probably change a little bit, but that goes for the March eleventh meeting. And then the last two are the intersection projects and there's two lines there, they'll be combined into one line, but last year we had broken out into two different areas, so there'll be two separate lines. Again, we'll look at those numbers and get those a little bit tighter, now that we're almost trying to bend those projects. Uh, number two is Vanderbilt Street Improvement Projects at the Intercent Railroad. Those numbers in there, we have, I think, two hundred and sixteen thousand and those were from last year. Since then, we have gotten, I think it was this summer, this past summer, we got. The UP railroads cost for that, so those numbers are actually, with the UP railroad costs, if the city is responsible for the painting, plus the city's costs is, I think, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And those numbers were provided back in July or August and they're good for one year, so basically those are FY twenty-five numbers. You know, the city was born, gets that project completed, um, this, this spring, early summer.
And what was, uh, what did UP want us to pay for?
John, what was some of the things that they had, their engineering fees, but then you have a little better engineering consultant's fees. And then just all the track work. Replacing those concrete and reset, and setting the tracks to fix the elevations. You know, basically all of it. Exactly, and then they did, they did, uh, not right now. Remember, they gave us their variance, this is signals, so.
Wasn't it like if we, we either had to do the signals or we had to put in the, like, the media and the concrete?
Well, I thought it occurred, so the media would be more here for, if you ever did, so. It was just adding curve on each side adjacent to where the, the cities are. And you have to paint the, yeah, paint edge lines.
Basically, how that, those numbers break down was, so I think their fees were around two hundred and five thousand and the city's was two seventy-five, two hundred and seventy, maybe that. So, you know, there's, uh. You know, if the city doesn't move forward with the project here right away this spring, this early summer, it's going to be a five percent increase, that number's probably just five hundred thousand. Uh, right now, you may recall, we have. You might look at Fox, we're getting some funding through the DOT. So we had submitted, the application for that had to go through the UP Railroads, did their sign off before I went with the DOT. The Giants submitted that, the UP Railroad back in October, and started, they're waiting for. Supposedly, they, they're trying to get their agreement with the, I have the DOT revise, funded. Fund that money and then they give the version of the DOT. So, basically, that's just not, they're choosing to resolve how they're wanting, you know, and so on. So basically, that application with the city's, they're, they're, they're not. So, you know, I mean, the council then considers, you know, we're just, you know, it's really three options, the kind of council considers, just leave it as is, revise the number for, for. Well, let it sit, or can something get resolved sooner than later? Or just pump it from that Y twenty-six and use that money towards other applicable ones at this time and then put it over the five year CIP.
What kind of funding levels could we expect from the DOT or is it just total?
Breaks down into twenty percent for the city, twenty percent for the railroad and sixty percent for the DOT. So on this project, it brought the numbers to five hundred thousand, the city view is possible for about a hundred thousand. But I think even if it gets approved, John, correct me if I'm wrong, it's still like four, like, four years out, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I, when I submitted that application, we had a TC, they were like, UP, head engineer at the UP. I indicated to him that we're going to request expedited funding, so it is an option, it was DOT, if it, if it's score's high enough or if it's high enough hazard. But I think it is, they can expedite funding and bump you up in line, I don't know how often they do that, but. Given the history of this crossing, if it'll be the case.
Yeah. But the DOT hasn't seen the light, so.
Yeah, you need to go sign and be like.
So, so really, the three, the three items, uh, is, we said, wait, we're, say, adding from the twenty-six. FY twenty-six, that'd be inverted on the five year CIP and relocate funding, we already have set aside for. We're just putting out the point, FY twenty-six and the city paid for the entire thing, it should be around four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Number three, um, is the water supply well, number four, observation well project and, uh, and the treatment that goes along with that. So well project, um, also be considering that, that remaining on Tuesday night. File plans, inspect and set up full hearing, and then we'll go over bids, the construction anticipated for the summer. Design on the treatment plan is anticipated to start once, uh. The water department guys and ISG finish up pilot, which I think they're racking that up and then ultimately the, uh, the report to the DNR, which I just made, I think. March and April, so I designed that to start March and April, or April or May of this year. Number four, it's the Santer sewer point repair, sewer mining project, so that would be phase two, which I was talking about. With the construction on phase one, this would be the site of that. As part of that too, we're going to look at, right now, those numbers are just kind of based on maxing out to the, to the bid threshold, which is two hundred and six thousand dollars currently. You know, I thought just continuing to do that every year for a few years, um, just so you have the information, we're going to look at what it takes to do the whole thing, so. What's the cost if, if the city wanted to line and point and pair all of the sewer main, how individual part of house? To give it a way of, much of a consideration. Number five then is the sewer water main extension, the convergent energy and city participation in convergent energy. Tip, participation and, uh, the sewer and water being assumed that convergent would install that as part of the site, means the city would be in person. Portions that are not being, um, the connection, that, that convergent would be responsible for it. But as I'm aware, and Dustin, correct me if I'm wrong, I, we have not heard anything convergent in that, so.
No.
But that would be something the council will want to consider. So it's like funding for this year for that or not?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, Shane, aren't they paying all of those costs upfront and then we're just paying them back with tip?
That's correct.
So we're not setting aside any funds?
No, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to say any funds, but the, uh. I guess the timing on it, the, the sewer and water main would be reimbursed at the time that they're installed and accepted. So, I mean, that could be in FY twenty-six, and the tip would be.
No, we suggested all of our payback to them, it's going to be through tip, but nothing is immediate when they do it.
So the sewer would be over the, like, a five year period, okay?
Right, figured out it would be like, if our valuations came out, been like we thought, it would be like a quarter of a million dollars, donated forty thousand maybe. Available each year, and so we showed them a schedule.
Just as the tip comes in, okay?
Just as tip comes in.
Yeah, I just, I thought there was some upfront money with the sewer water, it's going to be better, okay?
I don't believe so.
So you wouldn't have to budget for bond of each one of them.
You can borrow seventy, you can borrow six million one? That could be, could be the call.
Well, it can stay on the CIP if their project happens, but we don't have to go out and bond for any of that, we just certify it to tip.
The number six, um, the seventy-sixth Avenue, excuse me, boatway improvements down along the Iowa Land Building Site. So, that project has started, the design has started. We've completed topographic survey, survey and the boundary survey. But with that, then we put that project on hold. So I don't know if that's something the council will want to continue to move forward with, convergent isn't happening at this time. The, uh, most of you are aware, but maybe some of you are, Cedar Rapids is through development, just on, um. Basically, on that sheer corporate, let me ask mine with bare facts on each side, so there's development happening over there.
Where exactly is that line?
Right where that, that old house was, they tore it down, if you drive down there, they're in construction, right where they're, they're in construction.
Right off that pencil. So across the road from that house?
So there's the house on the south side, that's still there, it's basically across the road, but if you drive up there and that's kind of now part of mine, you still see, I think, like a little chimney foundation and trees and all open stuff there.
That's where the line?
That's Cedar Rapids, that, that western apartment, that, that will, that was, is corporate. So, again, you know, that'd be money you'd have to make available, but it'd be through tip. So, it'd be a little bit different way that you promote that money, so. So that's something the council will want to consider, you know, if we continue to move forward with that or not.
And that, uh, we would get some money from Iowa Land?
Iowa Land and Building would participate, um, and based on development agreement, they're supposed to participate as soon as we start designing, but if the city reports the project, they won't. But as soon as the city does fully move forward, then they, you know, participate.
And then the county will have some participation.
Participation too.
But then the rest, the city would have to bond for, but we're making that payment with tip, future tip.
So part of that, and Cynthia and Dustin and I talked about Cynthia, what kind of that would, that, that dollars would look like, whether or not convergent goes in. Then number seven is building addition to the existing fire station. I think the only thing that's different from last month when we met, was we had thirty thousand dollars in for architectural fees. Should be enough, but I don't think Dustin or looking into some of that stuff right now.
Then that number might drop significantly per year, so, it needs to change.
Yeah, weren't you, Spence, you looking to see if you can bring that down under the bid number, the bid threshold?
Yeah. But it depends on who the client and architect and what if they would come back, they have a.
Number eight is the, uh, restrooms in the pavilion at Harlem Hays Park. That stuff was funded last year, there's a little bit of additional money just with the growth of the project and, um. Based on some of the design build requirements that have changed over the last couple of years. A little bit extra cost in that.
Shane, wasn't there discussion on that about cost savings if it's wood?
There's, yeah, I mean, there's some, John can give you more, but I know staff were really adamant that they don't want the, the maintenance in one term. Standpoint on that, so these numbers are, are at length for block building for the restroom, the pavilion. But the, uh, the restroom proposal would be gone.
Just a rough savings from cement, maybe twenty percent, twenty percent.
So we already looked at, you get a hundred and ten versus a hundred and thirty-five. earmarked in there for the construction of the restrooms. Then, uh, number nine is, uh, the tennis slash pickleball courts, down at Complex, uh. Restrooms in the Frank Creek Park and, uh, theater at the Complex. The first apartment, and, uh, requested to be moved up to FY twenty-six, so. So, any question with those projects?
Any question back up to the water?
Yep.
Line three B, I'll call it.
Yep.
Design for the water supply treatment facilities and well number five.
Yes.
I know we're working on number four. A while back, we talked about getting a permit, so that way when five would go in, we'd have that already, ready to go with the state, we wouldn't have to wait for that, but. What's the savings if, I'm, so I'm assuming that's already done, the approval for five, or is that, is that what?
So the approval, the approval for the engineering agreement's done, and if you recall, the, the, the agreement has spelled out, so well five is in the. So well, five is in the agreement, but I think it's a total of forty thousand dollars, the whole thing, for just the well. Out of that one, we're tuning in. But we aren't gonna move forward with that until council says go ahead and do that, so.
So this doesn't imply. A well number five is gonna be.
No, no, it's just, it's just included so that, you know, this isn't gonna be constructed probably for three years. In four years, it just takes time to get the design, we're still figuring out, you know, this year. Or gets started and then we get the water quality and that stuff, so. So it's just assuming, you know, by the time that's built, you know, what is the demand? We'll also know, you know, what type of draw are we getting from well four? You know, we only get two hundred and seventy five gallons a minute, or we get five hundred and fifty. You know, definitely the impact for it, and in two or three years, we may have to shut down wells one and or two. Which also. So it's in there, you know, we're ready to do it, the design and then multiply construction of well five is part of that, we're all. But I didn't do anything from the design standpoint. Until, you know, we know more what's going on, we're comfortable, let's do it, if we're not, let's not, unless you.
I just, I get nervous when we figure out on number five, and I understand the reasons you just explained, because we're putting in four. We don't know what it's gonna produce, I get that. But if we talk about putting in five already, I understand it's an SRF. But we still have to raise our rates to pay for that, so. To pop three or four years, that's a guess then, that could be ten, that could be five, could be six. But I just want, I want you clear on my end that. Put four in, wait and see, but my other opinion is, is one and two are still working. And this is more for you two, the experts on maintenance and stuff. Why shut it down? And that that's discussion for down the road. Or whatever, but that's just my opinion as I see it now, as far as. They put in five, went forward, not even in growth up there, it's been flat, I think there's, like Chris said, there's been six buildings last year. Yes, industrial isn't going, but.
It's hard to say, it's it's in the design, so that's why it's listed there, it's in the design agreement, so if it's needed, we can go ahead and do it and get it done. You know, and and part of the thing with well one and two is they are old, they have asked about quality issues with them, and the treatment is bare minimum. You can't, you know, they had some pouring, some chemicals and. You know, so there's not a lot you can do if there's issues with those, at this point, it's pretty much.
If if the quality is such with it. Then, okay, but I just, I don't want to shut down one and two if we can still. Get something out of there, and that just means five moves up that much faster, yes. Raising rates and everything falls far behind all that, so.
They were asking us to shut down one and two when we put four in service, we talked about that. So we're extending as far as we can, the ones we hit five, don't probably likely make this.
Okay.
Well, and four doesn't go into the service until the water treatment plan is built, right? So you're talking about fifteen million dollars for number four's usable?
Yeah, using, yeah, well, that fifteen million dollars includes the construction of all five.
So.
Do that, it might be fourteen million or fourteen, but yeah.
Did you just tell us that we're gonna put well four in, but we can't actually use well four until the water treatment goes online?
Treatment, yeah, I have a report, yeah.
So you have to put it in, so and that's only, you only need the treatment if the water comes back bad, correct? So depending on what the water treatment is.
You need treatment no matter what, water flying is not making more.
I mean.
Through the VNR regulation, you know, the treatment.
Well, they can't use treatment over here because.
The ones downtown are shower, they don't have the issues when we're drilling down deeper, which is matching what well three is. It's gonna be the same qual- quality of water.
But we have to build a treatment plant over here because the other one's over here.
Well, we can't pump the water all the year they treated, and that's one besides correctly. And we still gotta deal with ammonia, which we don't have any training at all to treat that. And so that's why we're having to do the new one.
It's kind of like the West Cemetery Road Bridge. If you build that now, you couldn't build it like that, just like the wells, you couldn't build those wells and just do the treatment you're doing with it now. Yeah, because it's been in use and it's very modern in, but you could just. Drill those wells and do the same treatment.
Yes, we were just kind of, when we started with the whole well number four thing, I think we were kind of told, well, you know. And get the well in and then we'll see, you know, what that is, and if we need treatment or not treatment, and then now we have to have the treatment before we can use, so.
It's always gonna be treatment, if you're the type of treatment, the shallow well is what really.
It's just, we don't know how much water we're getting to size the plant, that's what we don't know until after it's drilled. Over ninety nine percent sure of what we're gonna have to treat. And how we're gonna treat it, there's just no, we don't know how fast we're gonna treat it with how much water we're gonna deal with it.
We didn't have to do that with the water tower, because that went back to the plane for treatment and stuff.
What's that?
The water tower, we didn't have to treat that.
That's treated, we are treating.
But then does that go back to the plane to get treatment, and I guess that's.
No, the only one we have is up here at this water tower, that one well, it's the only one we have treatment, the two down here are much shallower. That's why we have contamination issues. And we don't have as much iron, because we didn't go, that ones aren't nowhere near as deep.
I just remember we put that up and then we had to do some other stuff because it, the water was.
It was the iron, yeah, well, three was the iron.
The water was terrible.
And so we're in the same level of the aquifer, so we're ninety nine percent sure we're having the same exact water quality, so we know we're gonna have to keep our iron. We know about what we're having from, because we've been testing for it on a pilot, which has been the same, because it's out of that same well, but. When we find out everything for sure, then we'll know exactly what we're dealing with, to know exactly what we do.
Isn't the new one a lot deeper than that old one?
It's, it's gonna be in the same level as what this, this one is gonna be a little deeper because it's farther up on the hill. We don't know exactly what the, for sure, the depth is, yeah, but it's deeper than the old ones, it's deeper than the old ones, like a hundred feet. Yeah.
And this drill in the well starts this spring, right?
Well, we're hoping late May to mid June it starts.
And we'll have a clearer picture of the draw and the usage and the quality once in the fall.
Oh, within a couple of weeks after they're done.
Yeah, well, they'll do some pump tests and different things, they'll do a lot of like, so we're doing the well, which is kind of really just behind the old Dairy Queen, the Mike's Mike and sex crease. Is where well four is at, and then on the far side of the building after property, it goes southwest, just north of. That's south of you though. Is the observation, that's being built, so then, what they can do is they do a drawdown and even the observation will go into the. Well four, and they can see how it impacts the other ones, so then they have a better idea too. You know, if we're looking at the. I'm probably for future left field, so we can put, you know, two, three, four wells out there depending on your table. So that's what the observation will source, so we can have a better idea moving forward than what we can do. On the project in the future was.
So this thirteen million number, or whatever it is, fifteen, has could potentially drop because of depend upon the drawdown and. The treatment.
Well, really, the only thing that's gonna drop with it, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's hopefully it's more than enough to cover the. The water treatment plan, or maybe just a little bit less, you would try to bunch these numbers to account for, but. I wouldn't plan on dropping a lot, like you said, I think there's around a million dollars for a well five construction. So it doesn't need it at that time. But, you know, again. Hard to say what growth is gonna be, but even if wells one and two can keep operating. I think, I know Kevin and then what did, he provided a chart to kind of show growth and water usage and all that stuff, and. And even if wells one and two are continuing to be used, there's draws, continue to decrease because of the rate. It's still like ten years, you're gonna have to have a five, even if the quality of wells one and two are good, so it's not like. Well, five is something you're gonna put off or.
No.
It's it's gonna be needed whether it's in four or five years, or if it's in ten years, you're gonna need, so.
And I just reminded the money that million five thirty nine, about eight hundred and fifty of that's ARPA. And ARPA has to be spent by the end of this calendar year, so those are the first funds. We're gonna start drawing on Ling County's grant as soon as we get the first payout for the construction. And then we'll spend all of our ARPA funds after that, and then start on the SRF construction loan. Right now, we have an SRF planning and design, and then that below at the. Million two seventy, that's an SRF planning and design loan, that's been, we don't have that money on hand. We request reimbursement as we spend.
So with the whole fourteen, fifteen million, do we know what that's gonna? Do to like individual water bills?
We haven't looked at that yet. They'll require us to have a net revenue of covering one point. Hundred and ten percent. Of the payment.
It's gonna be a lot. That's the short one.
The good thing is that the sewer lagoon one will be paid off. Before that, and so the sewer debt fee, although it won't go away completely, should drop significantly. And so there's some. Uh, just trading from sewer to water.
So just, I guess another question is, so this is partially because wells one and two. Want to be shut down, right?
That's production.
We can't do any work to operate and fix them or maybe.
Right, but also with expected growth, we're gonna need more. Has there been a conversation? To extend the build, or maybe move it move it out to the future where. We would connect to Cedar Rapids for a surplus.
Because it's gonna be way more expensive in the long run to do that. So directly from them, they don't want to do it, they're trying to get Robbins out of it. Because Robbins gets water from them, and they're trying to shut them off, get them on earth.
They get, yeah, I think, uh, you know, you just get water into a sewer from Cedar Rapids and their rates don't become tremendously from year to year. And Fairfax actually connected to Cedar Rapids sewer for a couple of years. With the development. The Bruce Civic developments up there, and it was Fairfax seen the same thing back at that time, you know, the two. That's why they put in their state.
I was at Palo's budget special earlier this week, they send their sewer to Cedar Rapids. And over the last six months, they had between eight and nine percent growth of. Increase in the Cedar Rapids fees, and Cedar Rapids is looking at them again, and they haven't let them know yet, but they anticipate another. Um, eight to nine percent jump in within a month. And they have no control over that.
I get that, but I'm just thinking that, for one, we don't know what. The rate increase is gonna be by putting in a sentence, even if we're saying that. Eight, nine percent increase is still maybe. A lesser expensive option. I mean, I understand what you're saying, if they don't want to, I mean, that's.
So you're gonna have, if you wanted to go that route, you got two choices, well, you only got two choices, you either continue doing what you're doing, both yourself. Or we shut everything down and go with their water, but you can't mix them. Because the water qualities are different, we'll have all kinds of issues with treatment and maintaining it. And it's gonna be a horrible nightmare trying to figure out how to control that.
Yeah, so it's not a temporary, it's if you do it.
It's one or the other.
Commit to it.
Yeah, then we're gonna be charged for flushing.
Yeah, charge flushing and then you.
Anything water that we use in the town will get charged for, so it'll run through a master meter. And what, three, four hundred thousand gallons that we use for flushing, will be charged for that. For employers, employers, especially if we're, we were kind of Cedar Rapids Fire Department. So I agree, we can get built for that. For our usage, yeah. It was, we thought about it, but it just didn't make any sense, and that's why we are where we are now.
I think the really thing is the sticker shock, because I can only speak for myself, when we initially started talking about this. Cost of the treatment facility has gone way up, but that's a reflection of construction costs, labor, materials, all that. And the goal of putting the treatment facility there is doing a well field in that area, so we're not having multiple treatment facilities. We have one treatment for, you know, two to four wells or however many units when they end up there. Because, you know, I think before we're way behind, well, not way behind, but we're behind on replacing wells. And the first you'll be able to recase, I don't remember how, so, and you're not gonna be.
So yeah, you also are getting chips having your own water sewer. But you can push up again, back up against Cedar Rapids and negotiations, or as you can if you connect to them, on top of the cost.
And the majority of the cost is gonna be upfront. The idea was to size the building and make it all set up so that when the next wells come in, all you gotta do is just add some guts, add some guts, add some guts. Everything's gonna be relatively cheap, so to speak, I wouldn't say it's gonna be cheap, but. You know, I don't know what those costs are, but we don't have to add other buildings and stuff like that.
It won't be the two million dollars every time.
That's why we did that, the first time we did a twenty year agreement with them, could have gone to them temporarily. And once we hooked up, then the gloves came off and they started bossing us from. We couldn't, couldn't do, and then they started increasing our costs, they just kept raising rates. And then we said, oh, we're done with this, and we told them we were gonna take our stuff back. We were gonna be done, and they're like, oh, you can't do that, we said, read your agreement. And then we did. So luckily we were able to get out of that and escaped, but that was a short but quick lesson in how the bully works. So that's kind of why we haven't have. Have not ever gone back that direction, but.
I get it, I, I just, long term, we, gosh, it's maybe long term, whereas, I think we need to get creative. Because for the. You know, just residents around here, they don't care that Heartland Heights is growing. But if we're gonna make them pay for it. Wouldn't sit well with me.
Well, and there's different things, you know, from, you know, how you structure your rates and all that stuff, that. Your plan, what we create at, that you probably will look at and consider. But that's obviously for another meeting. Any other questions with that project or the FY twenty six?
When do we get to cut stuff off?
Right now.
Excellent, get your act out. The slash pad, I like that, no. Um, actually. Phil's gonna crap when he hears this. I'm fine, you know, because we've kind of piecemeal the additions to Heartland Heights. So I'm fine with bathroom and the pavilion, mostly because we don't have much additional plumbing required. And I would ask, Rowan, I know his answer is that all important, but. I would be more inclined to put a pickleball tennis court in and cut the toilet at Prairie Creek and the amphitheater. But I'd like his feedback on that.
Uh, well, of course, I want it all. But I think the. Uh, I think there's some validity to the. Bathroom and to the. Amphitheater. Right away. If I only had one or the other, I I I'd have to take the, I'd have to take the tennis court to fall for it.
So I think that gets a lot of views by multiple age groups. I'd rather see that growing, and I think that'd get a lot more use than. A toilet at Prairie Creek and. And amphitheater, I'm not saying amphitheater would be used, but. If I had a Friday, I'd probably put the tennis court and the heart provided additions as one, one. Extra rest.
For the Heartland Heights, we've already got. And we wouldn't have to bond for that. And we wouldn't have to bond for that.
But I will tell you, the reason I think the pickleball court and the tennis court would be my my number one is because that's the. That's the gateway to doing the rest of that area out there.
Where would you fiscate with that?
Yeah, I think right now where the it's laid out at, it's to the west of the current of the new parking lot. Actually, just on the other side of the.
Oh, and that drainage area?
There's a little triangle there between the drainage area and.
I say you're gonna hold over the gardens.
No, opposite of the gardens.
So kind of that spillway that's there.
Are you talking about right between where like where the new parking lot is in the. The splashback in that waterway?
Almost straight north of the splash. There's like a triangular piece there that's.
There's supposed to be more parking there.
Parking goes to the west, I think.
Goes through that parking lot, that goes through the.
Then that parking lot would get expanded to the west when parks.
I think we did step over there.
Would you leave the lawn at City Park uh regional to? Other tennis court?
Yes.
How many pickleball courts would this hold?
I think we get five of them on there and they would be permanent ports. Similar to what we have in the uh. Tennis court now where in the spring we bring the nets out, they would actually go into the court itself. They wouldn't move. Unlike the ones that we have in there now that, you know, we tie them up or lock them up when they're not being used. But yeah, I think we get five of them in there. It's a Jones park and it's about the same size and we get five of them.
I agree with my pickleball courts slash dual tennis courts and then. Put on full restroom and the amphitheater for now and. Move that uh a discussion for next year.
I raised the dust and you voted to include five years plan or just drop it completely?
I'm suggesting the the. The the last two to put to the two to five year.
Thank you.
That's right.
Just a general comment, I guess I'm confused with the CIP process. It, my perspective is it feels inverted. So there were things that. Are added two to one year. There were things that were removed from the ten year. And. My understanding is we're supposed to, as a council, talk about this before anything's added or removed. But it feels like the conversation is to reverse. The work versus. Approve what we want to do.
I've always taken this as a real document. I think that is the opposite. The department heads bring up the projects that they'd like to see completed. And then we say, you know, yes and no.
It's presented. But not making the document.
So what we what we did, just so you're you're aware, so we basically had taken. The CIP, we presented originally in December, two months ago. And uh took the CIP from last year. And obviously we're a year further down the road, so we moved up some projects, just, you know, basically touched it up a little bit. And at that time, you know, we presented to you and they said, look at it, if you wanna add projects or you wanna renew projects, let us know. And then we sat down and staffed and then the staffs put their list together. And I took that list, I looked at those lists and if there was something like Joe added these three, three projects at the end of this. That he wanted to move up from the five year to the one year. And so I put them on there. And then staff, you know, we sat down and kind of went through it. And Dustin and Cynthia, you know, were saying, well, these are already funded or these are already completed or we're halfway through it, so they don't need to be on to see that. So we moved some of that stuff. And then I haven't gotten to the five year, ten year yet, so that's something I still was gonna go over with you. But like we removed the. In the uh from the ten year, we removed the port out for the city hall. We removed the library, we moved the fire station because. The city just recently purchased this and they staff thinks they're gonna stay here for more than ten years. Obviously that may change, but at this point they're looking, it's gonna be here for at least ten years. With the library addition and with the fire station addition. The thought is. You don't need to have those funds in here when a bunch of money additions are up right now, so. So those were removed. Other than that, nothing really has been removed from the five or ten. We moved things around a little bit. So with the five year and the ten year. What? Mayor Beer and Cynthia and Dustin asked was like, when the year's out? They asked me to put those in order, so some things got moved around a little bit, so like if you look at the five year CIP. At the top, those are the ones that we planned for next year, would be staff's priority for next year. And Mayor Beer's priority for next year. And then two to three, be two to three, or a year to two years out, four years, three to four years out, you know. So those are kind of how as a staff, we see those happening in the next five years. But obviously as council, you can say, no, we wanna see those happen this year or no, back to ten year. That's that's why we go through this process. So yeah, as council, you're definitely can say, hey, I was thinking to add a project or remove it, you know, maybe I'll say.
So we have the, we can. Flexibility to move things as, cause we never know what could come up. So we could have something, a project that comes up unexpectedly and we have to push other things off or back or. Around. There aren't here just so we could are aware that they're there and then we can prioritize what we need to do, but. It's not set in stone, I guess, is.
I think.
Unless we have money allocated, even then sometimes we still could take it off.
Yeah, just because we fund it doesn't necessarily. We have to do it, but to Nick's point, absolutely. Who was thinking about building a road to nowhere last year on seventy six? That was five million dollars.
Well, you look at Church Street too.
How many times have we kicked that intersection down the road?
Eleven?
Well, another idea behind this too that came up last week that if, and nothing that we're talking about qualifies. That's what we uh found out, but Lynn County was offering um some grant on. If we had something that we were willing to uh conserve water in Lynn County. Cities or whatever, we're gonna have first dibs of the thing, but they were looking for saving a hundred million gallons a year. Well, we don't even pump a hundred million gallons a year, so the size of the projects don't really relate to us, but they also need it from beyond your CIP. To prove that you are actually doing it, it's not just a whim idea that you're trying to go after mine, so. Having some of these ideas on paper to see is beneficial. I'm sure other grants are asking for that same similar. Parameters when you do apply for them, so.
Uh and lots of suggestions of projects to go on these lists come from staff. It's it's a collaborative review and idea break and starting and then you guys decide.
Are you thinking you'd like to add some stuff too?
Yes and no. I I honestly. But I'll I'll, I'm gonna pick on amphitheater. I I don't see why the, you know, I look at the ones in Cedar Rapids and compared here, I don't see why we would ever do that. I'm not gonna get into bathrooms at parts. Number one thing. That I hear is that intersection, I understand that. DOT has something to do with it, but they sure like us to pay for it. They wouldn't say no. I know we've asked for funding, but. If there's something that we can still do there, they're advanced along. So this clearly not a one year project.
Sometimes it's assuming you're referring to the. So as you recall, you're at, we we had with the MPO.
Right, I know it's on the, it's on the list.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the uh. The twenty five year plan for the MPO. And on that, you know, that's kind of a five year circular cyclical thing. And uh that really is quarter five years out of funding. That's it's priority for. Center for Fairfax and for the CR MPO. Um for Fairfax, um it's not like you've you've got a fully here you can fill next year. I mean, if that moves forward and gets approved through the MPO in the next year, it's still four years out. And that's why it's on the quarter five years. It wasn't on the ten. We kind of bumped up here in the last year or this year. But yeah, so some of that stuff, obviously they'll take our ticket ones. And we don't take bad money somewhere and some of that stuff, it takes time to get it. Either you're in. It's been around this thing forever and it's kind of been out there. You kind of lost hope on it and I'll do it like, oh, you guys qualified, they ran. Just let us know. So we never know when this stuff comes. It's it's to help you account for it, to help you get grants, like brought in. It's just a plan that I can land, obviously always moving and changing, so.
When you mentioned bridge chain, I thought of a question I didn't ask. The two point four nine uh million. That is us paying it all and then we'll get the million and a half back or is that net?
So I think that's all of it. And that's, those are the numbers I wanna look at. Now that we're further in the design, I wanna get tighter numbers.
Okay.
Um on that, so those numbers are gonna be updated. And and that's up to one point five million, so you're only gonna get qualified, so.
Right.
If the bridge, what qualifies is one point one. That's what the city would give, but yeah, it's up to five hundred point five.
Oh, I also wanna cut for Vanderbilt uh at UP intersection and hopefully get some grant money for that. Not interested in any cash. I do want to remind you that Congressman, Congresswoman rather, uh Ernst looking into that for us. Try, um one last check effort to try to get the UP to pay for. I don't know if that'll work or not, but it's one check mark I haven't, you haven't done yet.
Mike, are you suggesting it get moved back?
Yeah, yes.
For the two to five unless funds magically appear.
We can move it forward and back. It's all locked in a place until we change our mind. Second phase of sewer point repairs.
I was curious where that was too. Which, what areas the second phase?
I don't, I don't. Ryan and John touched on that for you, but I don't think they've really identified that yet.
Yeah, to the next worst spots, that's the plan.
Just a few things on the five year um list that I wanted to share with you. I've mentioned, so if you look at, you know, just the right of the project description, there's the years out, so. We listed those kind of how we see them happening in the years two through five. You know, if there's something that you really wanna see moved up to next year, you know, that's something you can let. Dustin or Cynthia or myself know either now or in the next three or two. You can move those around. I'm just like moving them back to the ten year and moving them up to one year, but. And some of those numbers we need to look at and finalize too a little bit. But. One of the things we talked about too. Was we have the UP railroad and the Vanderbilt Street policy, we have a quiet zone there, which would primarily be at the median. As you approach the railroad down the middle Vanderbilt. And there's been some interest in establishing a quiet zone there. Problems or difficulty would be with the. The feed mill there getting in and out and the other business on the southwest corner. Accessing in one of those and on the railroad street. But. If the uh. Improvements, we've already got the plans established for if that project does get moved back like it suggested. Yeah, that'd be something that makes it look at combining that as a, you know, into that project with Ritz. But there are some issues that with that that would have to be resolved.
What is a quiet zone? Is it just a berm? Is it, is it?
So the quiet zone is is basically, they wanna prevent people from being able to drive around the stop bars and driving through. So the thought process is the railroad, the trains are coming, they blow up much to one people. So if you can physically prevent people from actually getting into the tracks when the train's coming, then they don't have.
So like if the arms come down now, there'll be a media come there that you can't sneak around the crossing guards anymore.
Can you guarantee that the conductors are not gonna blow it anyway?
And the other thing that Mayor Beer and I talked about a little bit is. It's not a formal crossing, but you know, you go further down on to uh. You know what sort it is. Burger Lane, you know, when they have a crossing there for the railroad company, so it's kind of a private crossing. They blow up for that anyways, so I mean, even if the city puts money into that, you know, those are some things I think we wanted to know before you invested in that.
So they are blowing up for that crossing?
Yeah, so there's a lot of unknowns with it, but it's an interest, you know, citizens have mentioned that. Understandable, so we put it on there. It maybe if the firm project does get pushed back, it's something that we can cross the lines.
I need, would need a better guarantee that. The conductors are not gonna blow it, spend that money and then we still have the problem.
Yeah, the other, yeah.
What that entails, but that's just my comment with that.
Well, even if they don't do with the intersections, there's always some kind of construction going on through there and they honk it for the. Guys that are working there to know that they're coming through, so. Probably never gonna stop.
And it's my understanding too that the quiet zone would disrupt the truck track, there's the feed mills, I correct?
Yeah, there's the media.
Oh, no, but if we get the money from the other project, this would be the time to do a quiet zone if we could. But we wouldn't do it without the other project.
Yeah. Then the other thing I I had listed on there twice is the Fairfax Road Trail Crossing, it's down under five years out. That was actually pushed back and it's listed at the bottom with the ten year CIP. And then another thing Cynthia pointed out was uh. You do have some money set aside for participation with the Heartland Heights. Sanitary Sewer Extension for future other night development. And that might have been sitting there for several years and I anticipated needing that for our next person more, so. Yeah, that's something the council, they so choose and give. And they could be moved around a little bit to some sort of other applicable. Project where that might be used and then address that need.
That's the one sixty six you're talking about?
I would assume that that bond had, you know, sewer improvements in it, so we wanted to put it towards the lighting project, you know, based to.
Just a couple of things on the five year I wanted to point out. Can I ask a question?
No.
Fair enough, that was my question. So in the uh, I moved the library into the uh two to five year at year four. Um and I appreciate you doing that. Um and the cost, and I'd accept superstity that in there. One thing is that I think we talked about it before, like council meetings. We're we're learning as we're going as far as this whole process, we gotta work together, make sure we're partnered. The foundation, as they had started the fundraising discussion, so it's all just. Um one of the things they're finding is when they initially talk to someone, there's two things that come up. One is, um have you looked at any grants that you're actively seeking with grants? Cause for libraries in the state of Ireland or at least the United States, but state of Alex specifically, there are grants available. We're learning about that, but that would be something the city would engage, you know, with to get a grant to help with the funding, so. We'd like to be able to partner and work together as we move forward to look at some of that funding coming from grants. The other thing that comes up. The other thing that comes up is, but what's the city's commitment to this? So I know we originally said that, you know, no dollars committed and I certainly understand that. This being a fluid document, year four doesn't mean there's any dollars committed anywhere. It's just a discussion. Point, but uh, we would like to see, I think, generally, we're looking at if we could get. A million dollars between grants and city funding. Um, so maybe most of them are grants, but to get that, that would actually help us maybe get to a reality. Um, with fundraising, you know. Knocking off the other portion of getting up to the if it's. So I noticed the discussion points, we're not asking for any decisions there, but. Um, I just with the comment, you know, said they're going to do it all through private fundraising and maybe just adjust that word to say we'd like to do it through. Fundraising grants and and some participation from the city, not announcing, you know, saying any commitment of whatever it is, but. The hope would be we did it fairly decent grants, the Marion Library and talking with them, they uh, they did some pretty good. Or starts getting some grants and things like that, which um. You know, we'll learn to get there, but you know, we want to partner with the city. And together with what we're going to partner with to do this. So anyway, that's my comment. I'm not asking for a decision there. Maybe if we take that statement and change it, that would be what I'd ask.
So you're referring to the Red Connet business project funding through donations?
Yeah, and then to say donations, grants and some city participation is what we're asking. What's that sum is is it? You know, fifty thousand, five hundred thousand. That is going to be determined.
That seems fair at the console.
Yeah, just put through donations, grants and possible city participation.
That's fair. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Anything else on the five year thing?
Not that I. I mean, again, except if we must have moved to longer.
I would, on on the six to ten. The train connecting apartment height is is on six to ten. Uh, I think that number is nine hundred forty five thousand. I think since we're kind of in between the two. Spring, summer, winter, fall, people are on trails. Three hundred sixty five days a year. I think moving a trail connections up. Into the six to ten, I I don't know where, but moving it up. And next Heartland Heights. Plus with all the construction over here with the. That whole area, the bridge and Eagleview and all that. I think that's a natural. Process that we do connecting them sooner than than later. I think six to ten is. Pretty far out. Connect the cities. Heartland Heights all the way down to Fairfax. People you see kids use them all the time. So that's. It, I think.
She went a little bit from the six to ten to two to five or just bumped it up from nine to ten to like?
I would, I would put it into the two to five slot somewhere.
From your where there's a private landlord. That volunteer that would need some discussion before we get too aggressive on the grant?
Yeah.
There's actually. So we, I mean, some of that may get, obviously we don't know anything. You know, a lot of these, especially of six to ten. But you know, a lot of that's on um, bowling property. So, you know, not to say that the city can't go in and fire it, but I think right now, at least, you know, there's different things that come into play on all these projects and one of them like that would be. You know, is it likely to happen with the city leading it like you're saying, or is it not likely to happen if development happens? So. But I can definitely rule it out where you want.
Wasn't there a discussion moving it up along that waterway along the west side of?
Yeah, that's where it's located is is along it. Basically, it'd be kind of right. Along the between the waterway, waterway and sanitary sewer that was extended up to serve from the heights. There's already a corridor where it's kind of identified.
To me, that sewer easement. Or was?
Yeah, there's a sewer easement. That's that's what that's the only thing that's really there on the whole property is a sewer. So maybe you can't require an Eden for a trail because obviously you can do things. You know, on a farm ground, you can farm it. See property. But again. Whether it happens in. Four or five years or yeah, nine or ten years.
And we've already said that things on the CIP can move.
Yes.
It's fluid, right? So bringing it up sooner.
Doesn't necessarily where it's going to go, but at least why is moving the project up is is what my reason for bringing it?
The other one you should consider is the Eagleview Drive Water Main Extension.
You beat me to it.
You know, that one could run the horn and. It needs to be done, in my opinion, same time the birds have been done.
And I'll add to that Henry and Hallie's addition just next to Dollar General. I mean, you've got. We want commercial, we want industrial, but here we've got some areas that don't have sewer and water connected too long. And.
The people using that right well now is probably over. Regulation capacity current. So it's a matter of time before. DLR finds out and makes you do it.
And I think one of you guys had said something, there's a fire hydrant or Eagleview that's there's three. Backed up or something, right?
It made it so we can just look at it later. Yeah, that's wealth and currency cannot be hooked to where it's used.
That's my opinion. It's going to entice business to come in if there's water and sewer. There.
So you're sorry, I mean, Eagleview Drive Water Main Extension Project? Yeah. So that's that's basically two years now. I mean, it's it's three years on this, but it's, you know, only one year on the CIP in twenty twenty six. And by the time the river or the intersection project and the bridge project happened, that's this would be right after.
Henry Hall is on the eight to nine year. I guess road. What was that? The Henry Hill head Eagleview Drive improvements, thirty two. That's extended city's public water main and Henry Hall's addition. Going to connect for cities public works. That's like right in the middle of six, six to ten. The one I seen is probably a road.
So nine years down?
It's on this eight to nine year. It's the one in the six to ten capital improvement.
Or did you mean even single view drive, six to seven years?
That's the one I see.
No, it's further down if you want to name the extension.
Yeah, that water main is going from the north side. Then the water main extension north from Henry and Haley is going through Boland Field. It's basically connected to Heartland Heights. And the.
Oh, okay.
So that one is is out there, ladies.
So what's the one that gets water and sewer to?
That's the one on the three years.
Alright, I was.
Yeah, that's that's the one that's listed three years out. Eagleview Drive Water Main Extension Project.
You're talking about over Dollar General.
Just on the south side of Dollar. He's talking about.
That's that's the Stollman Road improvements. That's in, but there's already water.
That's over the five, Tom.
So Stollman, yeah, Stollman Road is on two to five. It's the third one's out five years.
Yeah, you do have water.
They have water, get sewer down there and it would improve Stollman Drive. Basically, we can do an asphalt roadway there.
But Stollman Road Utility Extensions gets water and sewer to that.
They have water, they have, they just need sewer.
Well. Yeah, so where the Dollar General is and those two bit taken lots of the South Dollar General have.
Have.
So this, the Stollman Drive project would extend water down just part of the bridge project we do and extends water. Over to the intersection of Stollman and West Sematary Road. So then it would move it down, tie it, sort of, and it would extend sewer down to the Dollar General, all those other two bacon lines. And it would improve if you wanted to seal it up to the asphalt.
Currently, it's a dead end, so you know, what it's all the difference. Yeah, that's very solid.
Good question. Do you mean certain understanding of the proposal?
So for the things that we might have to or will have to borrow money for. Um, am I understanding that the priorities are and not this isn't number one priority than or whatever, it's just the priorities from this. One year capital improvement plan, the pickleball, six hundred thousand, the fire station, three thirty. Um, the sewer lining phase two, two twenty five, the grids, two point five now. The intersection, one point six six now. And a big question mark on seventy six, I didn't hear a decision on that. Were there other things? That, you know, the right away, that thirty two thousand, I mean, we have that on hand, I'm sure. The additional for um, Heartland Heights Park, we have that on hand. We're not going to have to borrow for that. The convergent energy would not be borrowing upfront, we would just be using to rebate. Am I missing anything on that first page that you have said some possible go ahead anyway? I kind of just need to know to context the next kind of step. Is that we get some estimations from Sphere Financial, you know, how it would work, how it would flow. It's still not committed. But I just kind of need to know an idea. This is kind of what you're thinking.
Are we interested in seventy six? The diesel origin link or is that both?
What?
Is that the road and the diesel origin link?
Yeah, okay, yeah, and it's actually, it's actually four ninety, four ninety five. As I said, these numbers are right. We're working on looking at them a little bit closer. And I played a little bit more in there and John had the actual.
Yes. Yeah, there would be participation that for five, that's then we would get. Money from Iowa land, we would get money from the county. And so the net amount we have to borrow, right?
Right.
And then that would be. Yeah. Be repayable with two. Remember, we decided not to borrow the rights grant.
Right. Has converged it committed to that farm?
No, we have not received any any conversation yet.
Where were we at and what's our chances when or I should say if. Or or when? I mean, if my initial thought is that they're not looking to go in there anytime soon. What's the reason to develop that right now?
Well, they're not the only lot along there.
But who who else other than that?
Well, Iowa land doesn't let us know who they might be talking to, but Cedar Rapids.
Yeah.
I have are coming right to the to the limit. So.
So we know this building there or what's going in and that other.
The other data center?
UTS.
That's right.
Yeah, they're already, we're in the south with seventy six that we already.
Yeah, we've had some. Somebody else interested.
Because there would be conversion lot and then there's, what was there, four or five lots along the north side and seventy six.
For the Cedar Rapids, we keep getting okay, so that's their land, so for this night, so that's further down all through there, so it's.
What's conversations going on here? Let's get everybody real back in. So we don't get that now, though, we don't have any cost sharing because they are.
I'll land.
Yeah. They're already tied with with, they've got a development agreement, but if they have to pay, then county will pay. It's better to do it sooner than later for Lean County's participation. Something happens on the south side of seventy six and we do an annexation, Lean County is out of it.
I agree to.
Regardless of what their conversion, considering not, they have to help pay.
Iowa land, Iowa lots, yeah, that's what I forgot about Iowa lots. Everybody read.
Iowa land. Yeah, make sure you got the right.
Um, send Denver fresh memory, we have enough to revenue from Tverro and Regen.
Well, that's what we would ask Maggie to look into it. You know, that's why I'm kind of wondering what are the possibilities? And then that starts the discussion with Sphere Financial. To double check. Yes, I believe so, but. I'm not the final word on that. Is that list accurate? But I want to.
Yeah, we just got to decide if we're going to do seventy six.
I guess I think for us to design seventy six, we would want to know.
So you want me to leave it on the list for right now, check the sphere, get you some more detail.
Find it.
Okay.
I'm looking at that stuff, looks like dirty things, so we can determine.
Success.
Okay.
Cause you see seventy six all the. Last year we were on the weird clarity, all those. Commercial and light industrial properties are. Spraying them pretty quick.
And Shane, if we went forward with this right now, you know, you said you kind of pause it. We went forward with it right now, when would we be constructing seventy six?
I, we'd still be shooting for next year. I mean, if I think it burned the next. Six weeks, we can. The timing of that, it's right, looks up well, it could be right around about the last seventeen or fifteen hundred seconds, which I think we're still.
Anything else on the CIP project just for the moment?
Okay, thanks everyone.
There's all kinds of fun things.
Alright, and we'll move on to the fiscal year twenty six.
Does anybody need me to bring it up on the screen? Cause everybody's got one in front of you, right? You can't read it on the screen anyway. Can I just shut the screen then? Anybody have a problem with that?
Save energy, maybe you'll get it to break.
Okay. I'll go through this as fast or as slow as you want. I've tried to fill in. Um. Um, things from the state info, things from just looking at our history, department head um. Estimations, so if you have questions or I mean, see something not right, speak up. So the first page is revenues. Um, I think last meeting we kind of talked about the levy, so uh, the state's showing that we had eight point two percent growth. So they rolled back our um, general fund levy back to seven, six, three, five oh three. Which takes seventy eight thousand four hundred from if we were at eight ten. And um, so that million two seventy six, that's at that max. Um, the ag land is always the three point oh three seven five. Um, this is filling in. Up to the eight ten with insurance money. And if you remember, I double checked, make sure. That our general fund insurance cost was more than that and it was. Um, excise tax, that's just a separation out to the utilities, um, the calculation of state does.
Um, I. So this, the current uh, state policy is that we can't have more than three percent growth. The current legislator are looking at two percent.
But. Well, but we can have it, but they'll ratchet, they'll put you into a formula and wrap it down here.
Right, now they're looking, reducing that further, but nothing has been fine by us.
And they, they still do right now anyway, allow us to levy for the insurance, allow us to levy for FICA and IFRS costs for employees. Um, and other benefits on health insurance and debt service, and we don't use any of those last ones. And the only reason we're using the insurance is to take us up to eight ten. Uh, licenses and permits. Um. The twenty five thousand for the building permits, you know, that looks high compared to the actual six months, but it's fairly close to the actual. Reality. I have no idea what the housing market is going to do, whether that's accurate or not, but it's probably close. Use of money, um, this is uh, you know, where some. Interest comes in and then some fees that we charge. You can see part of this kind of the library board part from the parks and the director. Page two, our community room rentals. Interest, intergovernmental, I'm not anticipating any federal grants that I'm aware of. The liquor license sharing and those last two, the 24,000 and 3,039, those are calculations from the state. That 3,039 is phasing out that that this fiscal year that we're working on is the last we will see and then commercial industrial state replacement. The business property tax reimbursement we have for now, but they'll probably try to take it away. H three. Local grants and reimbursements, that's fired contracts from city of Walford, Clinton Township and Fairfax Township, those are estimates. I will check with Fairfax Township, they typically do have a meeting before we have to finalize, so I'll tweak that number. Typically, I don't hear back from Clinton, but it's not a large number anyway. Building department payload, what we bill them, library support, the township. The Lynn County and the city of Walford. And then general fund charges, which aren't large, most of them are either library or parks. And then miscellaneous, this is where donations come into. Page four, we had sidewalk participation or port fines. Road reimbursements, that's where, you know, if we do 76th and. Iowa land does participate or that would go in there, the county would go into the intergovernmental sections. If I find out more that we're going to go ahead with that, I'll probably plug in some numbers there, but right now I do not have those in. Library donations, park donations or sponsorships or concession stand. Cable franchise revenue, that's not guaranteed, but it's been consistent ever since I started here, so. The banner program, that's if we sell 33 of them. Page five. Refunds, the welcome packet, you can see the half year and the what we're projecting is the same, but that all comes in at the beginning. Before the end of December, miscellaneous and newsletter ads. Page six is special revenues, road use tax, the league's estimate would be 397, 334. You can see half year, we, if we double that, we'd be at 408, so I just kind of went in between. Lost. I've just doubled what we've gotten and added a little bit, not much. The state is actually saying we should plan on a 13.9% increase, but. I would rather be conservative there than aggressive, but I can raise that if you want. That would, if we went with that estimate, that it would take that 475 up to 526.5. Anybody got a thought on that, the 475 or the, or should I increase it? Tip revenue, that's what we have already certified for debt, so that's already set. And then Lynn County. This is, it's so hard when our fiscal year ends during the construction season. So will we spend Lynn County and get Lynn County's 423.5 before the end of June? I don't know, probably not, so there might be some spillover, if you remember. Shane and John tried to get me as accurate guesses as I can, but come July or August, we'll probably have to do an amendment to true up any. Projects that didn't come in like we thought or, or more or less one way. Numbers, page seven, I don't have anything filled in, that's where you guys kind of determine the long-term debt. And then based on your projects and debt, we'll look at what transfers are then, I will fill that in during March. And same with cap, page eight, that's just a continuation of transfer. Any questions on the revenues? Page nine, public safety is our first program. Law enforcement, the contract with Lynn County is going at $3 an hour. So if you keep it at 18 hours a week, it's now at $45, so it would be 42120. The fire department, you'll see in the notes over here, we, we. We come up with their total by the cities, a dollar per thousand, which would be the 168, 611. Walford has committed a dollar 43 for this year. Then the township and Fairfax Township, Clinton Township estimates. The fire department has asked 60,000. To go towards debt payments and I believe Spanky's still, cause he's still here, still requesting that. And so those numbers together is 423, 882, and then there's suggesting 65,000 be in their budget from savings. And that is their, you can see their current savings balances.
Page two on.
I'm on nine in the notes.
Right here.
Oh, yeah. And so what I did was I made their, and then of course they have the new truck order, which is 400, oh, I need to add that to the wish list. And I think there'll be a change order next meeting for this. Adding another 5225. And so I made their total come out to that. 423, 882 plus their savings and then added the truck onto it.
Let's get back to you first, back on the fire, it's not really there on the loss money.
Yes.
What are we doing, 30,000 a year?
A couple of years ago, but we raised it to 60 last year for sure, if not the year before also.
Okay. I was remembering the third.
Yeah.
That's when we got the. Pay increase for the COVID money that the city received during.
The cares.
And then the insurance came back and said, well, if you're going to pay your firemen, you're going to pay. Workman's comp off the game.
It's not fair. Based on payroll.
So what I did, I, I kind of reversed it, I, I came up with the total and then I threw whatever was left into that equipment line, you'll see it's highlighted. So Spanky has not asked for 113, 990 to be on the quick line. I just did my best estimate on all the lines and came up, that's what was needed on there to come up with the right total. Typically, we let Spanky move, stay at that total, but move those funds per line as CCs fit when we go to enter it.
They split up into the other categories that she just rounds off the numbers and then. When everything's okay, then we'll go through and. Put it to training, equipment, drug maintenance.
Now, we kind of discussed that depending on the timing of the bond and stuff. That they might make the chassis payment out of their savings if they need to cash flow it. But if they don't, then we'll just try to have the bond in time to.
Just depends on that window on when that part of the truck comes in. They want you to pay the chassis first. When it comes in and then the fire part of the truck, when the trucks complete. It saves you a little money in the long run. But we're just not sure when that's going to be.
Right. Any other questions on the fire department? Their, they, their one debt is paid off this June. Just in time for the new truck.
And that keeps it in that same, actually the truck replacing when we get it will be. Twenty. Three years old, I think. So we're trying to stay as close to that 20-year. Rotation would be awful long.
Building department doesn't have a lot of different things except probably that we should talk about conservation easement. I know Chris has talked to Kirkwood and I believe that they've agreed to kind of. Oversee and handle, if you remember the donation agreement wanted a third party to look after that. Make sure the city's in line and whatever. And he really struggled to find somebody interested. Kirkwood is interested, but they do want a donation to their scholarship program to do it, they're not really going to charge us, but yet they want. And I don't know the specifics of that yet. And then also, you know, we're just kind of building up for the native seeding eventually. So that's kind of an iffy line that could change or need amended. Okay, um. Put a little bit more in salaries in there with the rental inspection program, Eric. Has been helping Chris and so he's been charging some of his time for those, so, so I bumped up the salaries a little bit more. Animal control is very minimal. That's page 11. 12, we get into public works then. And typically you don't have a lot of coming out of general, you can see that we take a fourth of the skid loader lease out of. General public work, so that's the only thing, and then we into the loss fund where we have shifted, shifted a lot of. Road expenses, the seal coating, the painting, sweeping and road repairs. Come out of that typically now, it has really helped the road use fund balance. At some point, we may be able to move those back to road use and not, you know, free up loss funds. So that seems to be a problem when we're doing our loss calculations at the end, we can look at that.
Question, not to go back, the new siren for Heartland Heights on page 11, but can I discuss? Years ago, was there an issue with that siren or?
We've been discussing it for several years, pretty much since I've been here.
Yes.
For the most part, the Lynn County EMA, they've been going, you know, all the sirens now. And last year, two years ago, I tried to give it, I volunteered to kind of be on the board, tried to help push it, it didn't work. I'm stuck on the board, but they, for the surrounding zone wise, there's not a need yet for it up there as well.
There's not, okay.
Yeah, proposed.
I was second or was so.
So, well, so with that, it's not, not high priority need compared to other spots. So when the, when you're on the map, they got all the different sirens from Benton County, they came in Lynn County, and so they distributed them. Or, or the most need was, so I don't know for us. But the other issue that's coming up is the new nuclear plant that is coming down the road. So all the ones they gave away, they're all going to have to redo all that contract. So in the future, that might be coming up again. And so, but I don't know if it's going to help us or do this.
Okay, then page 12, I think we're done with. Page 13 is some more loss, we also, we pay for the excavator lease completely out of loss, that's the 20,000 C. And then we start in the road use fund where the great majority of the street expenses are paid. You see this note here when I said it's really helped our road use fund. The road use fund balance the end of December is $415,000, never, I've never seen it that big. And so that's why I said we might consider, we don't want to pay for those three that we have moved to loss, if we don't want to continue that. We may want to consider moving those back. The projected income is 336, 883. And these line items mostly came from Lynn, I filled in with the insurance, so we met with Charlie. You know, and we're just meeting now about the April of 25 renewal, which he's guessing is going to be up 10%. So I asked him, well, I'm, we're working on the budget, I need to know what the April of 26th is going to be, and he just kind of chuckled, you know? So I, I took what we paid and added 10% and then added another 10% onto that, that's our best guess at this point. And then the employee insurance, I took the seven months at the renewal and then. Five months added 5%. Again, I don't know if that's accurate, but. And also tried to distribute in the, not only the current premiums. But you remember we're paying down deductibles. And so I think he had said, you know, kind of our worst case scenario might be the 14,000, 14.5. If we were in the normal percentage range, so I tried, I, I worked that 14.5 in these expense numbers also. In case that comes to fruition, it might not, that we don't know. And then you can see road uses again, paint a fourth of the skid loader leaves and so will water and so will sewer. 14. The technology, we, that's a big if. I charged part of our software renewal, you may have remembered, I've mentioned that they. They increased our fee that we had to pay in December by. 63% or something like that, almost 70%. And. They, their software's not working well, they're requiring everybody to go to the cloud. So once you get a replacement clerk here, you'll have to see if you're going to stay with the same software, go to another software, more expensive or.
You said it was a dumpster fire, it sounds like it made no improvements, not that roll out.
It's, it's horrible, the cities that are on it are rewriting it every day. They didn't have their W2s done on time, they didn't have their 1099s done on time. Somebody just posted today that. He put in a support call 29 days before W2s were due. And he didn't, they hadn't even responded to the support call until after the 23.
Maybe Tina could network against.
Maybe, yeah. Yeah, cause they won't, there will be software. So yeah, so that's, that's a big unknown. City administrator, I kept to thinking about this, though, I did not write in any increases of January, so I might want to bump that a little bit. And then the 17% of the clerks payroll comes out of this, so. This is kind of a big if too, so I kind of had my salary in through August. And then I had a replacement clerk in the entire fiscal year at $20 an hour, I don't know if that's enough. Maybe I should raise that, I, I don't know, but that's the numbers that you see in here now. And then I did raise training lines, I think throughout. In case you, the new person needs to go to class or more conferences or mentoring. Whether it's me or somebody else.
3,000 seems a little low.
Well, that's just part, I mean, it's all, it's on a core different, but yeah. So what do you think about the $20 an hour estimate? You want me to up that? 25?
What do you see as far as out, I mean, you're, you're in with all the other city clerks? I mean, what, what do you see? Not obviously with your experience, but what's up middle of the road is 25 in that ballpark?
It might be, it, it's hard to find a new clerk.
Do you get what you paid for?
Yeah, right, right. It really, you know, if you're going to get somebody with experience, it's going to take 25 at least probably. If you're going to get, you know, maybe somebody just out of college or out of Kirkwood with an accounting degree or, you know, interest in business procedures. And they don't have any specific municipal experience, the 20 might be enough to start them, you know, I don't know.
If you shoot for 30, just starting, it'll all come down, I mean, that's where.
I would think unless you get somebody really experienced, that's probably too high to start at. Okay, I will revise. Okay, I will revise the numbers to twenty five. Utilities, um traffic services, um snow removal, that was such a guess of how much snow we're gonna get. If you go on our actual half year, then that's way higher, but. It's probably gonna snow. Um.
Brian's work.
Um on the snow equipment, Lynn's got twenty thousand for a non automated brine maker and all that, Lynn, talk about that.
But we, as you know, we've been having to prevent the. Thing we made for the shop or the line that we bought the brine from uh the DOT and kind of playing with it. So we're still looking for uh. Well, I would like for the brine makers really about thirty to close to forty thousand dollars, but it's automated and everything else, it's pretty nice. So going down to the twenty thousand here, there's a couple of them that are not automated. Um that are not really user friendly, it's a lot of maintenance, the headache to clean them out, headache to kind of maintain them and so forth. They're more of a like a landscaper, small time guys. Make the brine machine, which I think might be okay to start in my classes. I'd say anywhere from a minimum of five years to ten years. For what we're doing currently, for just what we're playing with the brine, the amount that we need to make first form really is not a lot. We're using about five hundred gallons, they think to treat everything as a lump code thing, so it really wouldn't pay much to make that five hundred gallons. When you even talk about trying to make an in-house one, we smell together, which would be very similar to that cheaper machine. But the nice thing about the cheaper machine that takes all the. The thought process out, they've already figured out how to make it instead of us trying to. Figure it out, but we're kind of hoping they give something, they have a big generation. They kind of help us out and try to get that action. They showed a couple of the pictures of using the uh compared to not using the, no the difference of those to the street. And there's a difference, but it does help, but to use is. What they say, the same as all the uses about five times more compared to Brian for materials, so there is a cost savings on material. But I'm still not a hundred percent sold on everything, we're still, we're still waiting. But there can be a cost savings there, so. Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking currently, would it maybe a smaller machine? Go in that row.
Well, that's the thing about brining pre-applied.
Yeah, and that's what we did here uh just yesterday, you know, for the ice storm that we came. And we only did it as a one layer thing, whereas we're watching the other towns, talking to them, oh my god, those guys, I can't. How many times it's sprayed in the prior, their their street were wiped, it was just crazy how many times it sprayed. But even for what we did was still probably a minimum. And you can see where um our lines were from the applicator. And where the lines were, it de-bonded the ice, you can see it cracking up, it's not sticking to the road, so it helped it. Uh release early, um we did pound the ice, but the one story toward it. Everywhere where we put it free, I do like I did half the battery. I did one half, I branded the other half, I did just to see what I could do. It cleaned half the street, so it was like unbelievable, so then there's a couple of other strides, I couldn't see any difference. So but I'm still, we're still trying to learn, we're still trying to get, but. I still think it's the way to go to help. In our process. But the near thing in twenty thousand, but yeah, that that would be more of the, everything's manual, there's nobody trying, so there's no. So Moses, you mix it, you gotta check, make sure you get the right mixture, and there's a lot of, a lot more air, a lot more. The maintenance, headache, there's not real good ways to clean the machine out, so there's a lot of. A lot of issues, but but it's still more of a. Yeah, beginner machine. But the machines that go, like I mentioned earlier, you could go up to forty thousand, thirty. You know, nice automated one, it's two hundred or two twenty power, you know, so every. Um or and then you can go on from there. And there's some, the DOT, they use their own, it's about seventy thousand plus, your digital tanks, the store. Which is crazy, you know, we're not ready for that at all. Uh there's other machines very similar, a hundred and twenty two thousand for the same kind of thing. But we don't have the storage, but we don't have the the space for that. The the smaller, the thirty thousand dollars, the smaller. They're usable for us. You can pick them up with the scanner, where you need them, bring them out without a season, so they're warmable. They're not really. Space, they don't take up much space, if that all makes sense.
So do you guys want to go with the twenty or up that?
Or is it something you even want to do?
I've got a question from, how many times have you applied Brian this season so far?
Three, right, four, there are four out there.
Three for sure.
Yeah. And it's just the kind of different areas, we just kind of been trick. Picking and choosing, we've been doing a little more, which no matter what we do, I think it's still, you do more of your high traffic areas, you know. You wouldn't have to do every street, although this ice storm I tried to do, I probably did ninety percent. Ninety-five percent of the stress.
Looks like it fits under budget, or does it not? Is that what thirty thousand is up, twenty for the brine maker?
Twenty, yeah, that is for the not automated.
I would be okay with that as a place to start, see how it works out, now we get it.
Okay.
And that would be perfect at the beginning, and that's kind of max, I don't think, it should be much cheaper, but better.
So you show um the projected revenues four hundred thousand, right now we're at four oh five, forty three, but we're gonna make some adjustments and. In salaries, so that will go up a little bit. Um not, you know, it's not ideal to be over your revenue, but if you're. Investing twenty thousand in a piece of equipment, you know, you don't always expect that to come out of your new revenue, and again, there's four hundred. Plus thousand in the fund right now, so. Okay, on to page sixteen, library expenses, um. The library did go with the same increase uh as of January, and so they upped. Their wage number a little bit from their initial ask, and then I adjusted the FICA and IFRS based on that, and then um. Uh. Let's see, it shows a breakdown of um the total proposed and what's coming from Walford, Lynn County, Fairfax Township. Charges and donations and Fairfax net, and then they um. No, I didn't, well, they're not proposing right now to spend anything out of their CD, but they do have a CD balance, and then they're proposing twenty thousand to come out of the savings. Um on your next agenda, there'll be some discussion about um the property purchase or not, so other than that. Moves forward and whether it's in fiscal twenty twenty six, you probably just amend if it ends up happening, but.
I have a question for library, remember, Bruce Paul. Um thanks for being the library, Bruce.
Sure.
Um. The last fiscal or current fiscal year, the library had asked for twenty five thousand dollars in your planning and design. Of the library, but you're not requesting anything?
No.
For this next fiscal year?
We're not, um the phase we're in, I mean, the twenty five thousand was really to get the architect to do the design of plan, the initial design plan, so we could start fundraising. Start the discussion, so we have, so this upcoming year, we're really looking at uh the fundraising aspect and also. You know, I mentioned earlier, uh researchers started grants, things like that, you know, we'll be coming back, you know. Next year at the same time to talk about, you know, where we're at, capital plan, that, expectations, but. We don't have anything that would would be expenses this year based on. You know, there's no architect or architectural engagements or anything like that sort of planned until we actually. You know. Our go with with building, so. Yeah. Kathy, is there anything else? Yeah.
Um. I know council doesn't know, we we had a brief meeting with a couple of foundation members and Dustin and I and Kathy and. And Joanne, and something that I think you're going to hear from them going forward, and I think you got that a little bit from Bruce on the wording of the CIP is. They're wanting to see a city commitment. Now, I would suggest that maybe um when we get through this and you look at your lo- local option sales tax fund. That you consider a certain amount each year you put. In a saving, in their savings account or in a CD to eventually go towards. An expansion or a new building or whatever, you know, it's making. Uh city council making a commitment to that project at some level from your local option sales tax, that's.
Similar to what we do for the fire department.
Yeah, I I think that that would be an easy way to put some money aside for it. If you remember your local option sales taxes for any lawful purpose. And so I would definitely like you to consider that as a suggestion, when that level is, I can know.
That's a great idea, Cynthia, I mean.
Thanks.
Love that you brought that forward, we're gonna miss you when you retire.
Okay. Um so then page seventeen is culture and recreation. Um. These are mostly coming from Joe, but again, uh he and I discussed wages a little bit, I tweaked that some. Um based on this big wage spreadsheet that I do, the numbers I was coming up with, and then calculated the FICA and IFRS. Came up with the employee insurance amount, and then again, the regular insurance amount, the plus ten percent, plus ten percent. Parks continues on page eighteen. Um the Heartland Heights Park down there in projects. You know, question, is it done by June, you know, um. That we'll have to try to determine, if we don't think it's going to be, then we'll probably put some over in the new year, but. And then if uh we go forward with the. The pickleball, I would suggest you put that in capital projects, just to keep it separate and track it easier. Um on to page nineteen, then this is parks out of local option sales tax, remember the. Um city staff is doing improvements on a Federfield parking lot. And so this was um. Just a another continuation of that, I think three year project is planned maybe. And then uh the amphitheaters on there, but that will be removed. Unless you decide later at some point to fund it, um we're lost. Okay. Page twenty um is community and economic development program, um. Christmas decorations and banners, um we're doing graduates, and so. Um we would take revenue in to to pay for those. Um housing and urban renewal, uh development, engineering or legal or um. Development, planning and zoning and other community and economic developments. Those ten thousand, those three different lines that have ten thousand are really kind of guesses, but. Annexation and development. Heartland High participation, don't believe there's anything to to go in there. Um page twenty one, general. This is where mayor and council, um I have made the adjustment to the mayor's salary for half of this year, because remember that change doesn't. Take effect till January twenty six. And um again, the administrator. Do a recalculation of that. And then the clerk, uh this is where fifty percent of the clerk comes, so I will do a recalculation of that at twenty five dollars. Um you can see that this is um the training line I bumped to five thousand from the current budget of five thousand. Again, anticipating uh training for the new clerk and or mentoring. Um. Elections, there is an election in November of twenty five. Um city hall.
Okay, I have a just a question.
Sure.
For a second, our um. Insurance, um employees is age based, correct?
Right, and I have a note, there's probably highs based on mine, but I don't know, I'm sure that who you hire should be sixty seven. And so I could probably adjust that down somewhat, but it would be a guess, but.
Right.
Yep. Um city hall. I hate to even say this out loud, but I would hope that we don't have any major repairs, but you know, if we do. And you'll do a budget amendment, because there's not usually too much we can uh change if it needs something. Um the other equipment uh uh needs some new tables and we've discussed the product, the stove. Uh we have replaced the refrigerator and the stove will probably need to be replaced soon. Um here's the big question, you know, we've discussed it before, whether you want to do something with the sound system up here. Um. Uh and then insurance supplement.
What was that, sound system, was that like thirty?
Forty two thousand, I think, um to have a whole professional setup, that was sound and video. Um. Um yeah, and I suggested using local local option sales tax for it, but that was a no go, so. We've got the owl, I think we've worked out the kinks on it. Um but still, um. Whether the people in the back, if they're good or not, or whether the, you know, the people on the phone really hear.
Or even on the video, whether the the sound is not picking up. Someone who's not using the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, because then that new system would have microphones in front of you and. Um. You know, that improvement is probably the only one that I'm aware of, other than the uh tables and maybe the stove in the building. I think that was mentioned in the city hall budget. And then uh city hall, other admin is where most of our just operating stuff is at. And uh. Uh we transfer out of loss for the city hall bond payment. That's shown at the bottom of page twenty three. Any questions there? Capital projects, um page twenty four, you know, these are all ones that are either currently in design or um. Um not gonna happen or soon be in construction, this is where I kind of need to get some. Estimates from John and Shane about uh what crossing fiscal year lines, and then this is where I would move. The the new projects into. I mean, they might be on here, you know, like bridge construction is already a line, I would just put in a number. Page twenty five is a continuation of capital projects. And you see the um pitbull torches are already on here and the restrooms, I will take off. Page twenty six is water, the water and sewer, we do it a little bit differently, we list the revenue right on the the page. And so um. I filled in my best estimate for the revenues. And the uh regular and the debt service revenues and gives the total revenues and then expenses. These are coming mostly from Brian's, but again, some tweaking for the payroll withholding. Or city expense for FICA and IFRS and insurance and insurance. Those are really just the lines I mess with. Page twenty eight has the water debt service costs for fiscal twenty six. Um there's a note there that, you know, the SRF that we're still drawing on doesn't have a current payment. Then page twenty nine, the sewer begin, and again, the revenue. Um I would suggest not do anything with the rates, we just changed them in August, you know, I would say, let's let them. You don't have to just change. You don't have to just change my, um, at the beginning of the year for water and sewer, but we should look at this when we get solid waste, because Republic Speed will go up July one, but. Uh, the water and sewer, I would say just, let's see how they're, they're doing, if they are hanging out like we expected. Um, twenty-nine, um, is all the sewer revenue, and then page thirty is the sewer expenses. Brian, I guess I didn't ask if you had any notes or anything you needed to discuss about any of the water sewer expense lines, feel free to. Jump in and let me shut up.
Anything that major difference.
Not noted.
Yeah.
All right, and then at the end, the sewer debt.
Good question.
Yep.
Your total sewer expenditures from current budget and now jumps like almost two hundred thousand dollars. Lots popular, can you make a line?
What did you say?
Page thirty-one. Your local sewer expenditures for budget twenty-four, twenty-five compared to.
Six oh four to six oh one?
No, the last one, the last one.
Well, you have to look at it before debt.
Okay.
And before transfers out, so is, is regular expenses totals of six oh four to six oh one.
Oh, good. The difference came in to the debt search.
And transfers, which go towards that.
Okay.
Okay, page thirty-two is garbage, and again, revenues at the top over in the notes. Um, the current rate is twenty-two seventy-five. Um. They're going to, in, in July, they're going to increase, and their current charge is twenty-sixty-six. Uh, they're increasing to twenty-two as of seven of twenty-five. Which is an increase of a dollar thirty-four. So if we add a dollar twenty-five, we would be at, what, twenty-four? Um, so, you know, we'd be at a. Dollar ten, all right, twenty-four, ten, if you wanted to completely capture the dollar thirty-four.
You want to put something else in there, I was trying.
Well, yeah, we, the, we charge twenty-two seventy-five, and right now, they charge twenty-sixty-six. So there is, you know, a difference, um, one, we pay, uh, we added a little bit for the glass. Uh, we filled the dumpster in six months.
Sold this.
So our si, uh, estimate of two dumps a year was spot-on. So we did already pay three hundred to have it dumped once. And then also we pay, um, some of Stacy and some of Tina's salary out of garbage, um, for handling the bills and the payments. So any thoughts of what you would like? You think, no, I won't put what you would like, would you think the solid waste fee needs to go to?
I think Tom's commented, is that all rich adequate, they were budget?
Um. It, uh. The current balance is positive, but we don't really charge, um, let me kind of do a projected, I didn't get around to doing the projected. June of twenty-five balance. Let me look and see if we, because remember, we have been transferring from general to supplement, and so let me see if. I anticipate that there would need to be again, and whether, so whether that gap is enough now or not.
To make it true, but.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Farming. Two Waffen lines. And then the other pages are just, um, page three, four is just kind of totaling. Page thirty-five and thirty-six and thirty-seven are debt, and, you know, those are set, preset. That may be as fast as we back through them. I have a. Question? Or reports if you want to see, you know. Typically, we have more than, you know, five days or six days before the next meeting, so.
Right.
Um, I would, uh, get you any reports I can, and then if I have to follow up at seven later, you know, after the eleventh, I can do that.
Any other questions for Cynthia?
If you have questions after the meeting, feel free to email me and. And we do some research, usually with about three clicks of the reporting. Then I will contact Maggie about those possible capital projects.
On to item number nine, mayor's comment, family comment is the budget is always. Um, clearly later intensive. You know, still writing the lyrics, so. Free thanks to everybody who's working hard on the co-part, especially since they're. We talk of all these numbers that we provide to them, that's all I have. Dustin?
Nope.
Don't comment.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just letting you know, Tina's been out sick all week. A reminder about, that we have another meeting already Tuesday. Um, a little reminder, March twenty-fifth, that's when we have those two real short meetings, one for the tax statement. One to set the, uh, full budget hearing, you can't do it until after you have that tax statement hearing.
Eighty-four was here.
March twenty-fifth, what?
Eighty-four for that, right, for councilman?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
For what?
Yeah, that's super, that had a majority.
No, uh, uh, yeah, no, uh, so the first meeting on the tax statement, you don't take any action.
Okay.
It's just let people come and ask. The next one is just to set a public hearing date and, uh, is a resolution, so you need three, but.
So we had approved a levy rate?
Um, you used to have to have a supermajority before they did that CG calculate down. So if you were, if your total tax dollars was going up more than two percent, then you have to have a supermajority to approve that, um.
Okay.
And we did that, yes, at a meeting before the whole budget, but they completely changed that process, that's out. This new tax statement is in, we don't take action on that. You really don't take, make a motion on the budget till final approval in April. I forget what they called that before, there was a name for it, but I put it down on my mind. Um, so anyway, and then, Joanne, you want to talk about?
Yeah, so we're gonna do the same thing that we did last March, and following those two very short meetings. We'll have our second annual volunteer board and commission meet and greet, we certainly hold as many council members as possible. Um. In state, and we do have a couple of new board members this year and some that couldn't come last year, so.
And of course Dustin, who knew.
And Dustin, yeah, we'll get a chance to hear from all of those formally and, and we, and. And again, I encourage council, because I have heard from residents that have participated in many things, is. They really would like to know who the council members are, so that could be a good opportunity. So just be able to, to be there.
And we do it. I had a, I had a question from somebody, is that open to the public?
Yes, very definitely.
And we do it that, and that means we've already got you here, so we're hoping we can make this day another hour or so. Um, and then I just remind everybody, remember, the budget is our best guess that we can have for right now, you know. We could need to change it July first, you know, and we might have to do two budget amendments, which are pretty normal for us. Uh, cities with a lot of projects and the fiscal year ending in the construction, construction season, that's just normal. Um, so we do the best we can, but nothing's chipped in stone. And the only other thing I had left to say was go cheese, I don't know if I would.
Can't say both lose.
On that note, is there a motion to adjourn, please?
Oh, second, third.
On favor.
I.
Thank you, everyone.